Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Council President Kate McAllister. Councillors Deb Rule, Andy Groth, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick are present. We will see the mayor in just a bit, but for now, you get me. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the presiding officer, I am to identify the law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn with us. He's in the back of the room in case you don't know him.
Sorry for the interruption. Just for the record, I believe that Joel Espiro is absent this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Joel Espiro is absent. I, yeah, nevermind. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united, one nation under our liberty of speech, liberty of government, and liberty of justice.
All right, thank you. Are there any announcements from council?
Yes, Madam President, if I might. This weekend, Saturday, marks the second annual Find Your Strength 5K and Fun Run put on by the Bonner General Health Foundation. The foundation is a charitable organization for the hospital. This is the second year of doing it here. We will start approximately 9:30 to 10 o'clock. Our first race begins at 10:00. After finishing that, the 5K and the 1K, you'll have the opportunity to come down for a family party on the lawn at Trinity, just on the east side of the Trinity Lounge Patio. We'll have Bounce House, we've got cornhole, we've got face painting, music, awards that'll go on. And all of the money raised will go to a state-of-the-art wearable robotic called an exoskeleton. We are within $25,000 of getting this goal since I spoke to you this time last year. We will be the first hospital in the state of Idaho to have one of these and the only hospital in the state of Idaho to have one of these machines. And we're hoping to pull this off with the fundraising efforts of the race. Following day back at City Beach as well is the Long Bridge 10K and Half Marathon that we have partnered with that group, Priest River Multi-Sports. You may know them from the Race the Wolf event at Schweitzer and a few other running events. So we invite all of you and your families to come on down on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to extend a huge thanks to all the volunteers who helped support Ponderay Peddlers Trail Project this summer on city property in the Little Sand Creek Watershed. A week ago Saturday, we opened a new one-mile section of trail that was included some reconstruction on existing trail and some new trail to create the first public, if you're a mountain biker, you know what this term is. If you're not, you may not know what this is. It's the first public flow trail in the region. So it's a very wide, exciting trail that beginners would love as well. Volunteers pitched in over 200 hours on this project. We built an 80-foot boardwalk over a wetland and a 13-foot trail bridge further down, as well as did quite a bit of finishing work on that trail and hand-built a couple segments of trail as well. So a great public-private partnership. This project was included in the Little Sand Creek Watershed Rec Plan, which this body adopted back in May or June, I believe. And this is the first new trail since that rec plan was adopted. So one mile of new public trail on city property. Ponderay Peddlers volunteers committed over 200 hours. So thank you to all of those. And thank you to you guys for supporting our efforts to bring outdoor recreation to Sandpoint.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a small announcement. Just reminder to everybody, it's homecoming week for the high school. And if you get out of here early enough, you can go catch the Powder Puff tonight at Memorial Field.
Nice, thank you.
Madam President, may I say one more thing? I want to give a huge thank you to our local Sandpoint Rotary Club as well as the Ponderay Rotary Club. Sunday, last Sunday, we took in 125 bicyclists. Thank you to the city for the help as well, too. We had some vehicles parked down at City Beach. This is the first time post-COVID that the Walk-a-Nide, stands for Washington, Idaho and Washington, Canada, Idaho, bike ride started and stopped at Sandpoint, as we did back in 2018. All the riders got, riders and rotarians, made the loop safely for one week of cycling, came back to a party out on the grass at the Edgewater that day. We heard out of the 125, I think we had 117 that said Sandpoint was the best destination to start and stop a cycling event like that as well. So kudos to all of the Rotary Clubs that worked in Idaho, Washington, and Canada to make that happen.
And it is around the International Selkirk Loop, right? And Sandpoint and Nelson are sister cities. Those are the anchors on the loop, so that's great. I'm glad. All right, are we done? Any announcements from staff?
Yes, Madam President, we have a couple tonight as well. First, Chief Gilkease will be announcing an upcoming fire department open.
All right, how's everybody doing this evening? So on October the 8th through the 14th is National Fire Prevention Week. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. We will, we will be holding an open house here at Selkirk Fire Station 1 from 11 to, let's see, I wrote 1400, so 11 to 2, sorry about that. 11 to 2 on Saturday, October 7th, we'll have a station and apparatus tours. We'll have some interactive activities for kids as well as a bunch of fire prevention information. There will also be, we're going to go out on limb. There's also going to be a free lunch provided. It is going to be deeply rooted in the hot dog food group. So if you're, if you're into that, we just hope to see everybody there. I'll do an announcement tonight, I'll do another one at our next, next council meeting as well, just to keep that on the front of the mind. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple more, Madam President. Silver Box, Heather Upton presented to council on the Silver Box installations at the last council meeting. And over the course of the last week, all of the art installations have been completed. The last one, the Ursula's Roma went up today. So, and Heather had updated council that perhaps Ursula, the artist, was going to make her make her first trip out to Sandpoint to bring her art out. But instead, what she ended up doing is commissioning a reproduction of her art piece with one of our local metal fabricators. So kind of a nice story that even an art piece that came from out of the area was created out of the area, then had a local artisan that was involved with it. So all three of those Silver Box installations are up in the downtown core. And there'll be plaques going up over the next couple of weeks associated with those as well. Also, through Arts Culture Historic Preservation Commission, their last, the final historic walking tour will be on September 29th. So on Friday, next Friday at 10:00 AM. So anyone can show up for it and go on the tour. You just meet in front of the Panetta Theater at 10:00 AM. The last walking tour, I think they had over 30 people participated in that one. So it was a good one, and this is your last chance this year. And then finally, on special events, following up on permitted events, as Councillor Dick mentioned, the Bonner General Health Foundation's Find Your Strength event on Saturday, permit was issued for that. The Long Bridge Half Marathon event on Sunday, permit has been issued for that. And then also on Saturday, we have a permit, just in final stages of processing, will be going out in the next couple of days for the Glow4Dough Disc Golf Tournament. And that will be out at the Baldi property at the disc golf course there. That's it for us tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows public to address council and mayor regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in chambers wishes to speak now during public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a comment sign-up form and hand it to staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I will now recite the rules and procedure for public comment during the meeting. Counsel may not hear or take testimony during public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during a properly noticed public hearing. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Those in attendance shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, use threatening or abusive language, hold up or display any type of sign, speak out of turn, or clap, or engage in any other similar act which disturbs the meeting. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the mayor or council or to staff, and do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff here, staff up here at the front tables, as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside within Sandpoint city limits. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during public forum?
Yes, Madam President. Teresa Stevens.
Hi there, council. Madam President, thanks for listening to us and listening to the things that have been happening in the last few months. It's nice to know that you're having all these little victories, you know, little activities that are so positive and good, and I appreciate that. I was looking over the notes of 2020 and what your top goals were for city parks. I'm, I may have things just mixed up in my mind. I was telling my mother-in-law about why I want to speak tonight. And I know we're, we're wanting to talk about this at such a late date. But I was explaining to her how many changes, how the extent of the changes at Traverse Park in order to make room for that big building, that beautiful building that, that you're going to put there. And the extent of the changes from changing the back stops to parking lot changes, to the playground changes, all these things that are going on. And I, and so I looked at the top goals for 2020. Number 1.3 said that the city should offer to support others in the goal of developing additional recreational facilities. I can see that I have the expenses involved in just revamping Traverse Park even before the building was planned. The goal was to collaborate with land trusts and other organizations to identify, acquire, and/or preserve open spaces. Consider facilitating, facilitating purchase or retention of existing open space lands through transfer of development rights or purchase of development rights programs. Consider acquisition of additional property adjacent to the Cedar Park open space. Consider opportunities to increase open space and passive recreation through the development of new parks. All this should be considered. All this takes money. I, I feel that the money that's being spent on totally revamping Traverse Park should be spent on getting new property for more parks. That was your original goal. That was the top of the list. How about considering a dog, dog park at the location, at a location in North Sandpoint? And then another goal was to use the University of Idaho property to put in a neighborhood, hood park there. So couldn't the, the tennis courts coincide with one of these parks that you had considered down the line? Also, the Baldi Disc Golf Course property, could that not be used? Could that money be used?
That is three minutes.
And that kind of?
Thank you very much.
So thank you for listening.
Madam Clerk, do we have a timer up, or will you be the timer?
It isn't sharing. Sorry, I didn't notice that, and I don't know why it isn't. I do have a timer up. It just doesn't, it isn't sharing on the screens for some reason. I don't know why.
But you'll let us know.
Indeed.
Thank you. Right. Pam Duquette.
Good evening. My name is Pam Duquette. I live in Sandpoint. Tonight, I'm not meeting, meaning to beat a dead horse, or in this case, dead trees, but I still stand in opposition to the removal of the trees at Traverse Park for placement of the Russell Building. I would still like to see another option of placement for this project, not just because of cutting down the trees, but as in the curve petition I shared with neighborhoods earlier, too many people are still not aware of what magnitude this project encompasses and how it will affect Traverse Park. They are surprised to hear and to be shown what is going on. I know the tennis community was informed, but even neighbors around the park are not totally aware. One neighbor told me, this is the largest Traverse green space we have, and she would rather see the building elsewhere. The survey last January about Traverse Park and the open house that followed was not really about this building at all, or redoing the playground. It was an overall survey of best uses at that time. Back to concern of the trees. I put in a public records request to see what the arborist saw as the prospect of end of life of the standing trees, as I understood was one of the reasons we had to cut them down. I ended up paying $92.62 to get these records because I was told that it took longer than the allowed, two hours, actually taking four hours. So I paid my fee, and I did receive the information today. However, nowhere did I see any information on the poor condition of all the trees being cut down. One had scars from frost, I believe. The communication had more been on if they could be removed and plans for replacing them as they would be cut down. Garth Davis, one of the arborists from Spokane, commented, "I was asked to comment on the trees to be removed, the retained trees, and provide recommendations for tree protection around retained trees. Of the trees to be removed, the oak tree closest to the existing playground is the most remarkable tree." These are quotes. "But it is too large to be moved, as are all the trees within the footprint of the building." He went on to share how to choose new species, how to arrange them. I also received plans of where the new trees would be planted, what it would look like. Also, the new trees are really huge, which I guess would be awesome, some up to 60 feet in height. I now wonder the cost of putting those trees in the park and the survival of a tree that large and old already in the ground. I'm not an arborist. Speaking of arborists, I'm a little concerned. Also, we have a lot of local arborists, and we used people from Spokane.
Thank you, Ms. Duquette.
Rather support our economy.
Clint Frank.
Good evening, councillors. Clint Frank, Captain of Selkirk Fire and Local 2319 Union President. Basically here to talk about retention, and it's a kind of a massive problem in the fire department right now. We've lost four firefighters in the last six months and six in the last year and a half to two years. So I've reached out to these members, asking, why are you leaving the department? One, I'll be fair, there's a lot of opportunity in the area that pays more, so wages is one. But the heart of the matter is inadequate staffing, lack of operational support, and leadership of the JPA, specifically the JPA Chair. Under current leadership, we've seen staffing decrease and BC positions eliminated. The Fitch Emergency Response Study, which all agencies paid for, identified the BC role as an operational strength. How these decisions over the last couple of years directly affects operational readiness, outcomes, staff morale, and firefighter safety. Northside, our neighbors who we work with hand-in-hand on a lot of large-scale incidents have suggested they would like to join Selkirk Fire JPA, but not under the current JPA Chair. Our number one priority is to provide the best emergency response to Bonner County. If we keep losing good firefighters, this will suffer. We are respectfully asking a change in leadership in the JPA. We believe this will benefit the department and the communities we serve. Thank you.
Adrienne Albertwitz.
Hi, I live in Sandpoint. I'm here to request an always-stop at Lincoln and Main. I have concern about the speed of vehicles and volume of traffic in my neighborhood. Pets and other animals have been struck and killed. The street has no stop signs from Hickory Glen Avenue to Division Street, measuring .4 miles. Vehicles speed day and night, including railway trucks, Farman Stedwell traffic, and residents from the neighboring Hickory Glen. I'm sorry. It's just important to me. This is an unofficial school zone with buses traveling away from the school. The neighborhood has no sidewalks, no shoulder. Students walk and bike. Mothers push their strollers, elderly exercise, and people walk dogs on Main Street. I reached out to Bonner County Dispatch, the city of Sandpoint, and spoke to a city police officer regarding this matter. The officer let me know that it would be unlikely that anyone would be pulled over unless they were traveling at least 32 miles per hour. Additionally, the road was too narrow for an officer to park and look for speeding traffic. Radar devices could not be used because they're currently in use in school zones. Speed bumps are unlikely to be used anywhere in Sandpoint, evidently. And it was unlikely that I would get a stop sign in the requested location. But I was welcome to contact Engage Sandpoint, which I have done. They said they would review my request, and my request is closed. Looks like you're working on it. But the main point is that people are using Main Street as a thoroughfare without any impediment to Boyer Avenue. So if you can visualize, it's all the way across town so that they can get to where they need to go. It's a very narrow street. The neighborhoods in West Sandpoint are being heavily developed. Hickory Glen has 17 duplexes. There's new housing developments on Cedar and Lincoln, and another is planned for Main and Lincoln. And the current street structure is entirely inadequate for the neighborhood. Pedestrian and bike access are non-existent. And the speed of traffic is unsafe for animals and residents. So I think an always-stop could at least slow traffic in this area. And I've been reaching out for mitigation and been told that nothing can be done. So I'm asking you, can nothing be done?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question? What, did you say North Lincoln and Main?
North Maine and Lincoln, so it's a T. If you can picture, Lincoln goes in front of Centennial Park and then Dead Ends, and you can go left to the backside of Farman. And that's the area. It's a really wide corner, so nobody has to slow down until they're actually in that neighborhood. And it is used heavily, so.
So you're advocating for a stop sign on Main Street? There's currently one on Lincoln Street.
Correct.
Okay.
That street doesn't have a lot of cross streets. Main Street doesn't. The other one, the other cross street is Monroe, and it's one block up from Division. So it's, it's tough to kind of manage if there's no speed bumps or rumble strips. It's my guess. So that's why I suggested a stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
For the record, Mayor Shelby Ronstadt has arrived. Monica Gunter.
Monica Gunner for the record. And back to Traverse Park. I want one more time to talk in opposition with putting this indoor tennis court at Traverse Park. This park is beautiful as it is. Just add that new playground. Add the new, the new splash pad. Update the existing biking area and the outdoor tennis courts. You don't need the indoor tennis court to do playground and other updates. In 1985, a grant was obtained to build the existing Traverse Park through the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund. The grant at that time was granted with the stipulation to keep the park as an outdoor sports facility only and was funded as such. Now, 38 years later, you all decide to disregard this agreement. In 2020, the residents of Sandpoint devised a 20-year community vision plan for parks, and this vision plan promised to preserve and keep the northern view of Traverse Park. This tennis, tennis facility will completely negate that plan. How can we just ignore the 2020 plan? The folks that are so excited about the tennis facility are the people that play tennis. They do not care about the, they don't care that the location would be at Traverse Park as long as it goes somewhere. So let's make everyone happy, everyone, and just place the beautiful building on its own property. Don't destroy a beautiful park that was built as an outdoor sports facility. The parking situation will be a disaster. 100% a disaster. Did any of you drive by the park this weekend? Cars parked all the way up and down Pine Street, every parking lot around the dentist office. Every parking lot was filled. There's no way that we'll have the parking for that facility. Where in the heck will all the tennis and parkers park? Absolutely no way for all to park at Traverse now or in the future. Please reconsider location of the building. Think about the Great Northern Field or other empty lots around Sandpoint. Playground and splash pad can still be put at Traverse Park, but safety is important, and the playground is way too close, the planned future playground is way too close to the parking lot. With $7.5 million graciously given by the Russell family, there should be plenty of money to even purchase a piece of property and build the tennis facility. Don't destroy our park. And don't forget the stipulation in 1985 that promised to keep this area an outdoor sports facility, a promise made to secure that grant. I don't want, we don't want to have to call the land and water and explain to them what's going on. Those trees are beautiful, and they're not at the end of life. We need to save them.
Thank you, Ms. Gunter, for those comments.
John Travers.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, we're back. I don't have a lot more to say than that. She pretty much covered it. There's four courts going into that building, correct? Four to six courts? And they're saying our biggest thing was the traffic down Lincoln. Why you can't put it at Great Northern, I'm not saying where to put it or anything. But how much traffic is there going to be for that big, massive building? It's going to cover all of that park, all of Traverse Park, and take away all of that standing room, playing room, every place. When you go by it, it's full. It's, that whole area is being covered with people that are enjoying themselves at Traverse Park with all the baseball, softball, everything. You put that building there, where are they going to go? Because they've still got the parks, still got the games going on, and there's not going to be a place to put a blanket and a lunch, for instance. Eight people play on a tennis court at one time, 16, or however that works, but that going down, the, the traffic going down South Lincoln to Great Northern, that's not a lot of traffic. No, we can't park there during games and stuff, and I can completely understand that. But there's a 65-car parking area down at the Great Northern Park. There's one spot for it, and many others. It's been delayed for some reason. We understood that this was supposed to start two months ago, and for some reason it hasn't. If we'd have known that, we'd have been down at every one of those games getting signatures from everybody in Sandpoint saying they don't want it put there. And maybe the reason it was delayed is because it's being built on a dump. It's a dump underneath there. Things are coming up. We all know that. We've talked about it. We've talked about it with the designers and such, the things that are coming up in the ground and the settling out in the, in the ballparks and why it can't go over the existing, well, I won't bring that one up, but it's just frustrating. I'm not doing the right thing. This is an existing ballpark that everybody uses. I mean, it's crowded all the time. There's got, and we're growing huge leaps and bounds. Yes, we need an indoor tennis court. I'm on board with that, and it's a beautiful building, but that building could be put in a different spot. in a different spot to where that, we've still got that spot. Put it in a different spot to where you can call it the Russell Sports Complex and put everything around it that would create a sports complex, not the Russell Tennis Complex. Make it a sports complex like you're going to call it. That's just my thoughts. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Travers.
Zach Ukich. Jeff Calhoun.
Not a city resident, but my name is Jeff Calhoun, and I work for Selkirk Fire. Back in March, I wrote a letter about the legal liabilities of single-person engines and understaffed stations and got zero response. I'm back to say, single-person stations and understaffed engines are a legal liability. Leadership needs to change. Leadership needs to get more progressive towards the future and growth that Sandpoint has already seen. Sandpoint hasn't hired a new firefighter since two thousand and two. It's Union President Clint Frank, and he's fifty years old. Our fire department has asked for new hires and new safety equipment over the last three years, only to be denied by leadership. Again, we've lost six firefighters slash captains in the last year and a half, four in the last six months to go work for better pay, better leadership to other nearby fire departments. How would you feel going to a house fire by yourself, knowing that your next help would be ten to fifteen minutes behind you? Please help Selkirk Fire be more, be a more robust department with leadership changes and funding to better serve the deserving public. Don't compromise compromise my safety and yours. Thanks for your time. And if you'd like to see a timeline from Clint Franks speaking, they're back on the station back here with all the other paperwork. You can pick it on the way up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Berkeley Cox.
Hi, I don't live in the city. My name is Berkeley Cox, and I've been playing tennis since I was in the third grade. I love tennis, and it'll be a lifetime sport for me, just like it is for a lot of Sandpoint residents. Once I joined the high school team, one big thing that could have helped me and the rest of my teammates could have to become more competitive would have been an indoor facility locally, like our big rivals such as Bishop Kelly and Moscow High School have. I'm super excited for the new tennis facility, and having played at Travers Park my entire life, whether it be on the courts or on the playground or on the soccer fields, I really feel like it's the best spot for the tennis center, mostly because it's located so close to the schools and so in town, which allows me to walk to practice because I don't have a car much to my chagrin. Also, I feel that after playing in Travers Park for multiple sports, I know there's enough room for the tennis center to coexist along with all the other fields, playgrounds, bike paths, and walking paths. Travers is awesome, and the tennis tennis center will make it even more awesome. Thanks.
Well said, Ms. Cox.
Rebecca Holland.
Hi, Rebecca Holland, longtime resident of Bonner County. A lot of information being given out tonight. It's pretty cool to see so many people coming forward. A couple of things I had made note of. There was something I saw posted online that's misinformation about the land-water conservation grant that Monica brought up about that. It's true, in nineteen eighty-five, that was accepted with the provision that this was for outdoor recreation. And I saw that when some people have been asking, and I'm not ever suggesting where I think this should go. I think this should be open to the community to decide because it is public land. So I haven't weighed in on it on a place, but one of the places often is brought up is Great Northern. And that was not acquired with land-water conservation grants. So there's where one person was saying it could never go there because of that reason. The wires are crossed. It's at Travers Park that it should not be going if you were to honor the the deal. In talking to, it's it's moved on from Boise, and now it's over in Obaha. This is with the National Park Service, this decision, and it appears that facilities can happen, and it's probably going forward. But they do not have any idea that this, they think this is just a standalone thing for a new playground, which is also wonderful, a million-dollar playground. They they don't really even know that we have a playground that is perfectly good, servicing the community well, and it would be wonderful to add more things on, more things for little kids, et cetera, et cetera, the splash pad, et cetera. The whole deal with this building, everybody, it's wonderful, you know, the tennis kids can walk there, et cetera. But it's location, it's been location from the get-go. I have been collecting signatures, as you know, in the spring. I quit in the summer because it got too blasted hot, but I'm back there again, and people are now beginning to pay attention. They're listening, and this is going to be an issue and going to continue to be an issue right on up to Election Day, I promise you. So the smart thing is not to start up those chainsaws. I wouldn't do that. There's there's nothing in there that says when we're told that they're at the end of their life and hearing on interviews many of the trees. That's not the case, is it? They're all perfectly fine trees, and it's and it's disrespecting the community's investment in those trees already to even consider cutting them down with the issues that are there. That's the last thing the city should be doing is cutting trees, add more trees.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Holland for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have signed up to speak during public forum, and that has exhausted our twenty minutes.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of this evening's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to respond, to share some thoughts perhaps, and ask a couple of clarifying questions of staff in response to some of those comments?
Please do, Counselor.
Okay. Perhaps this is a question for staff. Jennifer, if you don't mind, how many sports fields are going to be lost to the construction of the Travers indoor sports complex?
None of the existing uses are going to be impacted by the sports complex. It's relocating the playground, but all of the existing fields will stay, as will the skate park with an expansion and expansion of the bike skills course.
So will Travers Park still be primarily an outdoor sports complex?
Yes.
For field sports?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the misinformation I've been seeing online say that a baseball field will be lost because of this building going up. Is that is that not true?
No, that's not related to the baseball field. A future phase has expansion of the parking lot, and at the time that the parking lot is expanded, it would extend into the baseball field. So that's a larger project, which would include reconstruction of all of the fields. So we have the same number of fields and expansion of the parking lot.
Okay. So there are future phases in which parking will be addressed as well?
Correct.
Okay. That was another issue that was brought up.
Counselor.
Yes.
If I could just add, when this came to council and we were talking about the land-water conservation grant, which is the grant that we have been awarded by the states pending release of the feds, and that's for the playground expansion. At the time that that project came forward to council, there was a discussion about expansion of the of the parking lot and the field project at the same time, which would be eligible for a land-water conservation fund grant as well. The priority was expansion of the playground and the splash pad, so the other, the parking lot and the field, the field improvements would be looked at as future grant funding.
Got it. And if I remember correctly, when that decision was made to pivot from expanding the parking lot to building a now a one-point-one-million-dollar all abilities playground, that was in response to public feedback, because public feedback on this project has been ongoing for twenty months now. I think this is the, well, we've had six, I think, presentations to city council over the last eighteen months on this. There have been onsite display boards with the design teams with which many council members were present. Many members of the public were present. Another piece of feedback, in fact, this one came up yesterday, was that council has been intentionally hiding this project from the public because it would be so unpopular if the people knew about it. I've seen it on the front page of the Bonner Daily Bee. I've seen it on the front page of the Sandpoint Reader. There has been a page on the city's website for almost two years relating to this project. So this is just in response to some of these these comments that I seem to see daily and hear repeatedly in these chambers. Ms. Duquette brought up the fact that we are planning to plant mature trees in along with the construction of the buildings. Is that is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, so the ratio, the ratio of trees, and I think there was a comment tonight about possibly adding additional trees. So as previously presented to council as part of this project for any tree removed, it would be replaced with three trees. In addition to that, when this is coming forward to council for award of the contract amendment to Geno Construction, who we already have on board for this project, then there is also for protection of the existing trees that we could save at the park as well, so.
So is there a plan to transplant at least one or more of the existing trees?
No, it's protecting a existing tree at at the site, and I can't speak to what specific tree that would be made, but I know there was a lot of work that went into protecting the trees, and in fact, today staff is going through with Geno bids for this project to get this moving forward to council, and the cost for protection of existing tree was over forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, but that is a priority for the city.
Correct.
So, and I don't think anybody up here doesn't care about trees. That's another incorrect statement that I've seen repeatedly, or kids or families. I think we all have kids and families that we care deeply about. A couple, a couple other things that the the fact is, if we were to put this building at Great Northern, we would lose multiple sports fields, and we would have a whole other group of angry people in here yelling at us about the loss of football, lacrosse, soccer practice fields. And not to mention the neighbors who would look right out their back windows because there's not a buffer of existing tennis courts between a possible location in Great Northern and the multiple houses that are located right on that park, existing parking lot, which, by the way, is much smaller than the planned parking lot at Travers Park. We just heard from another public commenter not related to this project tonight about the issues with traffic on Lincoln Street, which is right where Great Northern is. That, and we also learned in a recent meeting that Lincoln is built below our city standards. So putting a building at Great Northern would require massive infrastructure investment and widening Lincoln, accommodating the increased traffic that that structure it located there would would create. So personally, I also find it almost insulting to suggest that a family that's donating nearly eight million dollars to our city for a public recreation facility, we would hide it in one of the most remote corners of the city away from, you know, what I think it should be celebrated as a great community asset close to the schools. Berkeley, thank you so much for sharing your your thoughts as well. Yeah, so another thing we keep hearing about is the the fact that we're going to lose our view to the north. Well, I actually did a quick calculation. The the frontage of the building is a hundred and fifty feet, and there's over a thousand feet of frontage at Travers Park. So we're talking about fifteen percent of the frontage of the park will be impacted by this building. And by the way, the building will be several hundred feet back from Pine Street. So I just wanted to share some of those thoughts. I think there's an impression that maybe all of us aren't or haven't been, you know, kept in the loop by city staff or that we haven't been involved with this for almost two years now. I think most of us support it. If anybody else would like to share some thoughts, I wouldn't mind hearing them as well. So thank you for letting me share those thoughts.
Counselors?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So Counselor, thank you for doing that. We respect public comment, and this is our opportunity to listen, not to speak back. We deeply appreciate all the people that come up and are brave and sometimes are on the verge of tears like most of us to be able to get out what it is that they have to say. What we do up here is to is try to do our best to balance the needs of our city, our public services, and do the greatest amount of good with the least amount of harm. I'm not sitting up here and going to preach to anyone. This is what I try to do up here. I've said it before. Counselor Welker brought up some amazing points on how we got here, as well as the reason why we're looking at this location as opposed to Great Northern. We're gonna als we're doing, if we if we push it into another location, the comments that Ms. Cox had made are completely negated, and what we're trying to do is look towards the future of our kids. Let them blossom in whatever this sport is and whatever this can become for the future of Sandpoint and their youth with access to them. They can walk from all the different schools that currently exist right now and get to that central location. That neighborhood is central to town. That area needs needs as much help to provide service, recreation, health and well-being, mental, everything in that area, and it's all walking distance. What I'm hearing is much like what we hear with planning and zoning, which is the not-in-my-backyard stuff. And I get it. I one hundred percent get it. I've been up here for four years and trying to balance out. So who am I going to piss off less? That unfortunately is what we sit up here, listen to quite a bit, and that is what we're trying to balance. So I deeply love this community. I deeply love the Travis Stevens-Gunter family, and I get it. You guys are mad. Whatever happens moving forward, I I hear you, and whatever happens is going to be great for the kids. The kids are going to love it, and that's what my focus is on. The three to one with the trees, with having it in that location, and again, no decisions are being made. We're and and actually, this might actually be bordering on inappropriate because it is not our time to talk. It is our time to have listened, so I apologize if I have talked down to or across to anyone. I appreciate everyone being here. I love it that we have so many people here. Ms. Cox, it's very brave. Good job. I have high expectations of you in the future. Thank you. Jason, thanks.
All right, Counselor, I really appreciate you clarifying the record on those important points. Thank you for taking the time to focus on that. Appreciate it. All right. Again, that concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is eight hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and nine cents for regular payables. Does council have any questions? Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion, the consent calendar be approved?
I'll move.
Second.
It moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes. Motion passes. We do not have any old business this evening, so moving on to new business. We have three proposed resolutions for approval of some budgeted equipment purchases for our utilities division. Does council have any questions regarding the proposed purchases of standby generators at the lake water treatment plant, a vac truck, and a two thousand twenty-two backhoe? No questions? Okay.
Actually, just kind of more of a, it's a general question. Greg, help me understand how this fits into our larger plan to as I see this equipment, I see this is all in support of wastewater and and doing the best that we possibly can for our public while we're bridging certain things until like what I want is a brand-new facility. Like ultimately, that's what I want. As I'm looking at this, I'm seeing a chunk of money. I understand that things are expensive. So can you help me understand how this fits into our overall making sure our citizens, our wastewater is taken care of while we are also moving towards the the bigger plan, which is a new facility, if that question makes sense?
The thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, I'm Greg Lanning, Director of Utilities. The the two questions there are are a little bit separate in my mind as to the purchase of the equipment. The these POs and the purchases of this equipment tonight is you know, there's two pieces of equipment, the back truck and the backhoe are both replacement equipment to help us more in terms of our response and maintenance of the collection and distribution systems in the that either distribute water or collect sewer. The generators themselves are for the water treatment plant, and that's backup power for the water treatment plant. In the event of a power outage, the operations can continue at the water treatment plant. So those in and of themselves are different necessarily than the upkeep, maintenance, and replacement of the wastewater treatment plant. Therefore, if you have a, you know, if you want to build on a on a question related to that, a follow-up question, I can certainly answer that as well.
I'm putting myself into the general public, like we're spending this money. How does this help? Like this is these are the things that I want. I want a facility. I want a a new plant. Why are we continuing to buy equipment? these are the things that I want. I want a facility. I wanna a, a, a new plant. Why are we continuing to buy equipment? That I, I understand that I'm, I have conflated some things. Uh th- those are the questions and comments that I have out in the public for those that are generally paying attention like the wants, but the needs with the expense.
The uh, the uh, the equipment itself was built into uh the uh rate study from the beginning. So for the time I've been here nearly two years, the equipment was rolled into the rate study along with the needs at the wastewater treatment plant. So all of that was considered together uh in terms of uh the needs, level of service and these kinds of issues related to the operation of the utilities. The rate study itself essentially is a twenty-year build-out and capital plan. And it goes beyond that. It's a finance plan and it's really a business plan as to the operation of these utilities, which includes then capital. The uh so notwithstanding, there are equipment, uh there's replacement of pipe and manholes and these kinds of things in the budget. But a major item in the wastewater side of things for the uh replacement of the wastewater treatment plant, sixty-five million dollars uh budgeted for that is uh rate increases that we've seen in wastewater especially nineteen percent uh over three years. So each year a nineteen percent increase just to get us to a point where we can pay back a sixty-five million dollar loan in thirty years. So that just uh gets us to the point where we can pay back principal and interest for that loan. Uh that to them is built in, obviously a, and a uh a priority with council that they arrived here, we were talking strategic plan and uh council to a T talked about the uh wastewater treatment plant. So in my mind, then the rate study, the financial plan, the business plan for the utilities does include all of those elements, including this equipment in particular.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Are you none? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh first, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for PO number twenty-three dash zero nine eight one to Western State's Equipment for standby generators at the Lake Water Treatment Plant. Is there a motion?
Second.
It moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the resolution for PO number twenty-three dash zero nine nine seven to Owen Equipment Company for a Vector twenty-one hundred I vac truck. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Uh any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes. Finally, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution PO number twenty-three dash one zero zero one to Western State's Equipment for a two thousand twenty-two Caterpillar XE backhoe.
They moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. There's no discussion. This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Groth?
Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the final item on the agenda this evening, new business, is a presentation and discussion on the establishment of a Sandpoint Housing Authority, City of Sandpoint Housing Authority. I'll now yield the floor to Megan Conrad from Elon Burke, who's joining us remotely.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. It'll just take me a second here to pull up the presentation if that's all right. Hey. Well, thank you so much, uh Mayor, uh Madam Council President, President and Councilmembers as well as city staff. My name is Megan Conrad. I'm an attorney at Elam and Burke in Boise, Idaho at two fifty-one East Front Street. Uh happy to be here today to kick off the discussion uh with a quick presentation about the formation, proposed formation of the Sandpoint Housing Authority. Um I just wanna make sure before I jump into it, it's been a little bit since I have done a Zoom presentation. So just wanna make sure everyone can hear me and see the presentation.
Yeah, Megan, you could go into slideshow mode, though. We can see your, your whole screen there.
Yeah, I am in slideshow mode on one of my screens and I'm not quite sure how to flop those. Um let me try it on this side. Thank you for telling me that.
It's, it's not a deal breaker. There you go. Uh now we can see your notes. But there you go. That's it.
Is that better? Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. My mouse in the right place here as well. So what I wanted to step through with you all today in terms of the brief agenda, there's essentially three main topics and then a provision for some examples of other housing authorities. The first uh section is gonna be addressing the purpose of a housing authority. This second section will be actual steps to establish a housing authority. The third will touch a little bit on funding and authority operations. And then we'll jump into a few examples uh to the extent we have some time just to provide a brief overview as to what other authorities out there are doing. So what is the purpose of a housing authority? What is a housing authority? Well, a housing authority is an entity of statutory creation. It's located, its enabling statute is located at chapter nineteen, title fifty Idaho code. In general, the purpose of a housing authority is to provide for the acquisition, construction and or management of housing projects for persons of low income or the governing body, which in this case would be the city council, has made several findings, one of which is that insanitary or unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in such city or two that there is a shortage of safe and sanitary, here it's safe or sanitary dwelling accommodations in such city available to persons of low income or rentals that they can afford. I think when we talk about housing, there are several public entities that play in this space. One is the city. And um when we talk about the city's role in housing, we recognize that there are some cities throughout the state that uh do through a competitive process dispose of land pursuant to a long-term ground lease to support the development of affordable housing type projects. But in general, the, the primary responsibility of the city is the public safety, the public works, roads. And while housing is possible for a city to address, it is challenging certainly based on the limited funding sources available. The, another type of entity that we often discuss with regard to housing is an urban renewal agency. And an urban renewal agency and a housing authority are somewhat similar in that they are both uh entities of statutory creation. An urban renewal agency, as you know, is, is established and authorized pursuant to chapters twenty and twenty-nine of title fifty Idaho code. And the difference there is that an urban renewal agency really does not have direct statutory authority to directly fund housing projects. When we discuss an urban renewal agency's role with housing, it really is more in the context of an agency having acquired real property and then disposed of it through a competitive process. And through that disposition process, has had some controls on the type of development that will occur on that specific site, which often can lead to uh some deed restrictions or uh covenants that offers uh an opportunity to provide some workforce housing and or affordable housing to a particular community. So when we talk about a housing authority, somewhat of the benefit of a housing authority is that is, is a specifically directed entity which is focused on housing. Just wanted to jump into a few of the definitions here. Uh specifically, a person of low income is used several times within chapter nineteen, title fifty. And uh wanted to provide a little bit of background here. The definition says shall mean persons or families who lack the amount of income which is necessary as determined by the authority undertaking the housing project to enable them without financial assistance to live in decent, safe and sanitary dwellings without overcrowding. So the person of low income does not specifically call out uh what we traditionally think is capital A affordable housing, which is just rough definition um reflective of housing for those income earned households of eighty percent AMI or less. There is some flexibility, it appears in the language of the, the statute that allow the authority to determine what the gap is in the housing in their area, which opens the door a little bit for this discussion of as you, using the housing authority as a vehicle to support workforce housing. In terms of the agency's area of operation, in general, it's the, the city and the area within five miles of the territorial boundaries thereof. There are statutory authority for a county to have a housing authority. Um and certainly housing authorities can work together through joint powers uh agreements. Um certainly, uh this issue is a regional one and uh coordinating a regional effort is challenging uh with the goal of needing to start somewhere. Uh that really kicked off the discussion of uh the Stan, the City of Sandpoint taking the lead on establishing uh the Sandpoint Housing Authority. So I definitely, when we do talk about affordable housing, what does that mean? Uh loose definition, it's when an occupant pays no more than thirty percent of gross income on housing. As indicated, uh low-income housing is, is traditionally the um a household earning eighty percent of area meaning income or less. And then workforce housing does somewhat have a broad description, particularly depending on the location of where we're talking about because those income numbers change drastically between counties and between communities. But generally, that can be anywhere between even sixty to a hundred and fifty percent. So technically, a housing authority is much like an urban renewal agency. It's an independent public body, corporate and politic. It does not have the authority to levy, so it is not a taxing entity. And uh it is also one of those types of entities that is not subject to article eight, section three of the Idaho constitution. It, it does have the ability to enter into long-term debt uh to serve its corporate purposes uh without voter approval.
Mr. Mayor? Is it appropriate to ask questions now? Should we save them all till the end?
Megan?
Oh, I'm, I'm good with questions. Yeah.
Okay. Pardon me, Megan. This is new to me. I mean, uh we've been talking about this for a long time, but your presentation is obviously all very new. Um may ent- may enter into long-term debt. Obviously, a, a urban renewal agency can service debt using incremental tax revenue. How does a housing authority service its debt?
Uh yes, thank you, uh Mayor Councilmember. The these types of bonds are typically secured with income and revenues from uh projects financed with proceeds of bonds. So it's going to be rental income or federal grants or contributions. The city is not obligated for the repayment of any of these obligations. So it is more of the, the uh income or revenue stream from a project that's financed with the bonds.
Got it. Um another question, the Sandpoint Housing Authority, uh I take it that projects within the city limits of our neighboring cities would not be within the authorized authority of our agency. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Councilmember. That is correct. At this point, the, the geographic area of where a project could occur would be uh more limited to the jurisdictional boundaries of the city, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be ultimately a joint powers agreement or some buy-in by another uh adjacent community uh to create an entity or join in the creation of a more regional entity.
So
Megan, can I expand on that? So and this is certainly something that we considered at length. Um strategically, what would be the best approach to move forward? And we figured um, you know, while the goal ultimately, uh long-term would be, we would love to see, I, I would love to see a, a joint powers board that governed a regional housing authority um that serviced all of Bonner County, let's say, or North Idaho. We thought that it was most strategic at this point to move forward as a city, establish uh an independent body as a city. Um and then with our own success, we could hopefully along, over time, bring other partners along like Ponderay, Cootney, Dover, Bonner County, et cetera, and grow from there. Um but that way we wouldn't be um reliant on, or I, I s- I, I guess uh you know, put at the um, we wouldn't be relying on others in order to move forward at all. So that's strategically why we chose to approach it from this direction.
Got it. So uh Megan legally would, if, let's say, Ponderay wants to get in on this housing authority excitement. Would they have, you, you mentioned joint powers agreement. Would that require Ponderay to form their own housing authority? And then we have a joint, a joint powers agreement with that authority? Or could the city of Ponderay join our hu- housing authority without first forming their own?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Councilmember. Some of that would depend on ultimately what the long-term goals of the authority are and the location of these projects. Um certainly, it would be fairly easy for Ponderay to stand up its own housing authority and then pursuant to a joint powers uh agreement, those two entities could work together. Um it's, I don't know if you're familiar with the Ada County Boise City Housing Authority, but those are actually two separate authorities that do have a joint powers agreement uh to work together and they do alternate in terms of selection of the board. I mean, there is, I, I think, a lot of flexibility built into it, but I think we wanna make sure ultimately uh through some strategic development opportunities determining where these projects may best be located and serve and, and can kinda work into it that way, long-term.
Yeah, and get, correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but um there could certainly be an amendment that could happen in the future that could um where this existing board could be amended to and reformed into a joint powers, giving, let's say, in this case, a couple of seats on that board or one seat or whatever the case may be to Ponderay or other jurisdictions that, that choose to come on board. So there's a variety of ways that it could morph um as needed in the future.
Great. Thank you.
All right, jumping into the quickest steps to establish, this is all guided by chapter nineteen of title fifty. Uh step one is the governing body shall adopt a resolution declaring that there's a need for the housing authority in the city if it shall find, and these are the, the two factors that were discussed uh at the beginning of the presentation. The first is that insanitary or unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in such city or that there's a shortage of safe or sanitary dwelling accommodations in such city available to persons of low income or rentals that they can afford. Um it is interesting to note that such resolution is sufficient if it makes that declaration um without uh further detail being included in the resolution. Um or that would support either of those findings in the resolution. That being said, when we look at the standpoint goals and the, and somewhat, I, I know that this conversation has gone on for a long time, but some of the support that would meet uh those criteria stems from two studies that were undertaken in Sandpoint. The first was in twenty nineteen, the city did conduct a housing assessment which documented existing conditions in the regional housing market, provided an assessment of housing availability, provided an assessment of housing affordability, reviewed housing solution, and that was reviewed in uh peer communities, both inside and outside of the state, and then established some goals moving forward. The result of that study did determine that there was a lack of housing affordability. So there was um many occupants that were paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent. There is also some evidence showing that there was a lack of available units. That was twenty nineteen. Then in twenty twenty-two, the city obtained the housing and economic analysis that was prepared and conducted by Leland Consulting that made the finding that the increased population in the area resulted in increasing housing. that made the finding that the increased population in the area resulted in increasing housing costs. And as part of that, the results of that study recommended action included establishing this multi-jurisdictional housing authority. So that's, those are the studies along with, you know, other boots on the ground information that that you have and just the awareness of the housing needs in your community that do support the findings that have to be made in the resolution.
Megan, if I can pause you for one moment, I would add to that. There was a task force put together by myself in two thousand nineteen and twenty where there was a survey put out through the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation amongst employers in our region. And the number one response when asked what was the biggest challenge that employers faced when hiring or retaining workforce housing was number one on the list. And that was a well represented survey. We had eleven, that survey, the response represented eleven percent of our workforce. So I think that just adds to the voice here that Megan has laid out. Thanks, Megan.
Yeah. So the goals that have been identified by standpoint, and you know, I don't want to speak this limited to standpoint, but certainly initiating here is this support for affordable housing opportunities for low to moderate income households. And so that is emphasis on providing support for the needed workforce housing, which in has been defined through, look at, you know, your current income levels to be about sixty to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Part of this discussion really centered on, you know, how did we end up with that percentage range? There are a number of existing funding tools and programs that do support affordable housing for households whose income is below eighty percent through Idaho Housing Finance Association Authority and also HUD. Many cities have been able to also, through some additional state funding, work through providing some additional support. But there really is this gap and also gap of tools to support housing for workforce, especially between sixty and one hundred and twenty percent. And when we talk about workforce, it's important to stress that, you know, these are service industry and manufacturing employees, but it's also police and fire officers as well as educators. I mean, it's the people that really run and generate our city centers. So what happens after the resolution is adopted? Well, then the next step in the process would be the actual appointment of the authority board. Under the statute, the Board of Commissioners can either be five or seven commissioners. These terms are for five years and initial terms are actually established by statute. So in the first five years, you'd have one term rolling off after one year, two after two years, three after three, four after four, five after five, and then reappointments. You'd kind of get on a rotating appointment of a commissioner every year moving forward. Simply, it's the recommendation that five commissioners is likely plenty to serve the need of this authority. There is flexibility to change from five to seven or seven to five. So it wouldn't be that you would be locked into that number, but certainly it's more manageable, especially finding qualified candidates to serve on the board. You want to make sure it's just a reasonable number of folks. In terms of board qualifications, commissioners specifically cannot be an officer or an employee of the city. So that does provide some limitations in who can serve. And also, there's no, there is no statutory residency requirement, which is kind of interesting, but the, I think the recommendation here is that in order to find a qualified candidate, the city would establish some type of an application process that would support the selection of commissioners. In terms of who can serve, the recommendation that is set out in the, you have both a resolution and form draft resolution and some proposed bylaws in your packet for review is that at least three commissioners would reside within the city limits and then up to two commissioners would reside in the unincorporated Bonner County, the city's area of impact and or the cities of Dover, Ponderay and Cootney. The thought there is, you know, there's not a specific residency requirement, but it does make sense to establish the residency requirement of the county at this point. And so that does open the door to expand who may sit on the board. There's also, because of the linkage between the proposed housing authority and the city, it really is important that there's a lot of communication between those two entities. And so it's contemplated that the mayor would designate a non-voting city staff liaison to attend the authority board members just to ensure that information is flowing back and forth. This, like an urban renewal agency board, like many boards, commissioners are volunteers, there is no compensation. Certainly, there's some reimbursement for certain expenses that are incurred. Of the five member board, once the authority has residence that it is managing under its housing program, a recipient of a benefit is going to have to be appointed as a commissioner. I don't believe that that would apply at this point simply because it can't, because there is no housing. But that's just something to keep in mind, that the housing authority complexity, while fairly standard in terms of formation, ultimately can get very complicated in terms of the reporting and administration, especially once the overlay of federal grants and funds are worked in. For this type of an entity, you do really want to have commissioners that have expertise likely in housing, finance, development, legal. Again, like an urban renewal agency, it is not an elected body, it is an appointed body by the mayor with the advice and consent of council. So when we look at preliminary staffing, and some of this is also directed in the proposed resolution, the the city administrator would be appointed as the authority interim executive director. The city treasurer would be appointed as the agency treasurer. And then the city employee would be designated by the city administrator to serve as the authority secretary. So once the the board is established, then the first order of business really would be the initial meeting of the authority. And at that time, the authority, the commissioners would adopt bylaws. The bylaws sampled for discussion purposes is in your packet. It identifies the purpose of the authority, sets forth meeting schedule, the role of officers, committees, and also some financial provisions. The selection of the chair, the bylaws of the authority designate which of the commissioners appointed shall be the first chair. And then upon expiration of that term, the commissioners thereafter would select the chair from their membership. The statutory authority and powers in chapter nineteen state that, you know, the authority can have a chair, a vice chair, but then can also employ a secretary and executive director who serve as at will employees of the commissioners, technical experts and such other officers, agents and employees, permanent temporary as may be required. For legal services, it does provide express authority that the city attorney of the city may be used or separate legal counsel can be obtained. So a lot of the formation stuff is very similar to, you know, establishing and just a standard corporation. I think the challenge and where the rubber meets the road is really with the implementation. And when we look at the implementation, we start with agency operations, some preliminary funding and just reporting requirements. So funding sources, in general, upon formation, the housing authority does not have a revenue stream. And as mentioned earlier, it's not a taxing entity, so it has no authority to levy taxes. So it can't generate a revenue stream that way. So preliminary initial funding sources typically come from public entities and primarily the city. Certainly, once the board is established, it can, you know, strategically seek out what federal grants and funds may be available to help support the program, but certainly initially funding and support our city. It is a bit challenging to advance a mission without a significant source of funds. So either acquire property or to be able to contract with property owners in order to administer affordable units in a project. And with no history of a revenue stream and no assets, financing is likely to be a challenge in the beginning. From an operations standpoint, without a revenue stream, it's challenging to hire staff or retain experts that that you would want on board to strategically guide the implementation and how you want to direct the authority in its business. Certainly, you can rely on a very strong Board of Commissioners and or city staff, but certainly city staff does wear a lot of hats. So I think we're always mindful of standing up a new entity and what unintended consequences it could have moving forward. As mentioned, you know, long term planning and strategy efforts are important and that can be challenging to coordinate, particularly in the beginning. And even if not actively engaged, there are still administrative requirements. You know, there's meetings, minutes, financial, and there are some statutory reporting requirements in terms of when minutes have to be posted in an annual report to the city. And certainly, as you start, you know, working with the federal government on funding sources, there's that overlay of reporting requirements as well. So in coming up with the documents that are in your packet, we did try and take an overview to see what other examples are out there. What are other housing authorities doing throughout the state? We were able to locate seven that did have some level of an online presence. There are several that are fairly consistent with the mission that Sandpoint is trying to accomplish with its long term goals. There is the McCall Area Housing Authority. That formation resolution was adopted in November twenty twenty-two. I'm fairly confident that a board has not yet been appointed to that body. So it has sat for a little bit. I think some of the same challenges there are just trying to identify a more consistent revenue stream and in an amount that's helpful enough in order for that board to take some significant actions. So the intent in that community certainly is to support local housing, which is they've identified as a hundred to one hundred and fifty percent of the area median income. So we are closely watching that as it evolves. The Blaine County Housing Authority.
Megan, can I pause you?
Oh, yeah.
And I just want to comment on the McCall Housing Authority. So they actually established a joint powers board initially and had a, you know, I think it involved the county and I don't know what what the, all the players were involved in that original authority and because it was, it became challenging for them, cumbersome in a variety of ways. And so this new McCall Area Housing Authority is is a second swing at it. And this is a much more, I don't want to say localized, but it's a McCall driven initiative rather than a regional initiative. So so I think it just kind of goes back to your earlier question, counselor, that, you know, they tried it this, they tried it the regional approach, the joint powers approach originally and found it to not be effective for them. So they're they're coming back and and making it even more local, so to speak. Thanks, Megan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. That's, it's exactly right. I think this push pull between multi-jurisdictional entities and then, you know, wanting to see more activity and maybe communities not having ultimately the same goals. So we do see some of that of these expanding and restricting their scopes, but that's exactly right. In the Blaine County Housing Authority, they do lease a few units, but mostly appear to contract with developers with the concept of you have three or four units in a project that meet the qualification requirements. So Blaine County qualifies applicants for housing. It will match qualified applicants with housing. It monitors compliance, develops housing criteria, and it reviews and provides certain recommendations. So this is a little bit of a, I would say, a different news than we've seen from some of the other housing authorities. It's primarily funded by the county and other public entities. There is some rental income. And the overall scope of this housing authority is to support affordable workforce and community housing. So similar to the the goals we're seeing in Sandpoint. The Boise City Ada County Housing Authority is an example of a large authority. There are forty-one staff members, significant funding through HUD contributions, grant revenue and rental income. As mentioned, these are two legally separated entities that are operating through JPA, but they have a single staff that oversees both. They do deliver on a number of federally funded programs, both the the section eight administration of the vouchers, as well as the low rent public housing program. They have used the housing authority buying bond finance to develop affordable housing developments. It's been around for quite some time. This entity does appear to be more focused on the more affordable housing type stock, which is eighty percent AMI or less. Another example is Pocatello. Again, appears to be primarily funded by, I think, federal grants. It's, they tend to provide more, I think, of a localized voucher program where they're paying the difference in a contract run directly to the landlord. They do administer about fifty housing units and then about seven hundred and fifty section eight voucher units.
Megan, do you have any idea how many staff there are at the Pocatello?
You know, I don't. I can't remember if that website said anything about the number of staff. I can find out, though. So the last three are Nampa, Caldwell and Twin. Nampa actually has one hundred and forty-two units that it's own, that it owns leased to low income families, seniors and disabled applicants. Recently, they did expand to provide more regional services. And this appears to be more of a localized rental assistance, a need for rental assistance. And while it's expanded beyond Nampa, I do, it appears to be more focused on a, not so much on a, through a federal program, but more through a locally administered program. They do have funding from rental income and there just was not that much additional information available. Caldwell Housing Authority has two hundred and twenty-five units of project based in Caldwell. They also recently expanded their eligibility criteria, so it's workforce housing, low income housing, as well as farm labor housing. Funding appears to be predominantly from rental income. And then finally, the Twin Falls Housing Authority has about one hundred and ninety-six units and funding from rental income as well as federal grants. So several of these have have been around for a long time and, you know, provide a good base of resource for the implementation long term. And then some of the newer ones like McCall are very much in line, I think, with the goals that are trying to be put forth here and, you know, can work, I think, very well together in working towards what a new housing authority, how it works and operates. So with that, again, what you have in your packet is a resolution draft as well as some proposed bylaws. The resolution is intended to, in the recital section, provide background and support for the need in the community, as well as making the statutory requirements in terms of findings in the resolution and provided some additional information in terms of what the overall goals are, how some high level understanding of residency requirements. how, some high-level understanding of residency requirements for board composition. And then again, setting some parameters on setting an application process as well as initial administrative support. And then the bylaws really are your more traditional bylaws that you see, very similar to what you would find with an urban renewal agency, but focused on the purpose for a housing authority. But happy to answer any questions. I don't have any more slides in my deck.
Thank you, Megan. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor. If you could go back to the slide where it says burdensome for staff. Oh, you just passed. So I'm not sure if it's a question for you, Megan, or a question for staff, but when I read through the thing that stood out to me most is interim executive director. And what, what is the length of that interim? And maybe that's a question for Jennifer, because I think it says city administrator is going to do that. And then my other question would be, would it be reasonable to involve more of our planning area staff? The word burdensome stuck out to me because I know how many hats Jennifer wears already. So maybe she could speak to that.
Megan, I'll ask you to join in with this, too. I think the intention with this really is for our first meeting, you need somebody really sitting in a position of chairing that meeting, but ultimately, moving forward with selecting a chair and potentially with funding, the housing authority may actually employ their own executive director. It would be a transitory. I think ideally was the way that this was drafted rather than a long-term, a year or multiple years of the liaison and serving as a, as a chair. So another example where we have that scenario, although it wasn't set up as an interim scenario, is with the fire joint powers authority. So it's designated in our joint powers agreement that the city administrator is the executive director in that case. So different than a topic expert, which may be more of what our city planner would be. The role of the executive director is really putting together the agenda, ensuring that any city staff and liaison were in order with any financials, any elements that need to be presented at the meeting, getting the agenda put together, that we're in compliance with, with state code in terms of setup of the meeting, public meeting laws and those kinds of things. So that's what I see as difference between executive director, then perhaps maybe what the city planner role would be relative to it. City planner may be more of that long-term liaison back to the city itself.
Okay, so potentially somebody in planning would be a long-term. And so you would foresee that maybe the first handful of meetings, until a proper board is selected and organized, that that would be your position. And I'm glad you brought up the fire board, because that's immediately where my head went about, okay, you already wear one hat with that, now are we putting another hat on? And people are only physically capable of doing so many jobs. So that was what stood out to me with a big concern. But in general, I think the whole direction of this is a very positive thing, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Megan, on the federal grants, would there be grants to pay for staff? Or are the grants just strictly for projects?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, councilmember. That's a, that is a great question. And we still have not dug in substantially on the implementation side and the funding, because certainly the most immediate funding is going to have to come from the local public entity. I do think there is funding out there and available that would assist with operations, but you've got to be able to get somebody that's willing to, you know, apply for those funds and administer them appropriately. And those types of funding opportunities do change. So I, we don't have like a specific direction on the federal front yet in terms of seeking funding there. That is something I think that, you know, is, we have to discuss, but it goes along a little bit more on beyond the scope of what we're talking about, which is the immediate formation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
In the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, which council approved, the mayor had included in his budget twenty-five thousand in strategic initiatives as some seed money initially for the housing authority, recognizing that there may be costs with legal, with questions, getting meetings, going staffing. So some of those initial costs also relative to funding, what you tend to see happening more and more on a regional basis is some of the regional foundations, some of employer groups, others starting to come in and support development of these organizations in order to kind of kickstart really the planning and development of housing in the local community. Whereas traditionally, the housing authorities have been primarily HUD-based, focused on that lower than really more of the sixty percent AMI and lower. So looking at that HUD criteria and with a funding base that is focused more on that very low income as opposed to that workforce gap that we're now experiencing.
And I would add to that, certainly through the task force, it became quite apparent to me that there's obviously not only a lot of recognition of this problem in our community, but there's a lot of motivation from our employers to do what they can to be part of the solution. So and it's really going to depend on the board to determine what kind of program is most appropriate for our community. And there's certainly some programs that I think could engage the public at more of a grassroots level for that kind of participation.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I'm hearing you correctly, because I think one of the issues now is, it's just like saying the term affordable housing. Well, what does that mean? It depends on your perspective, what you can afford. So identifying workforce housing, you know, is it the medium? You know, the teachers, the et cetera, housing? Or is that another stream if we go the low-wage earners? I mean, is it all one or do we identify two separate? Do you see what I mean?
You know, that's, that's a great question and I'll just, I'll jump in here and feel free to add anything, Megan or Jennifer, if you like. So we intentionally with this, you know, shooting for that sixty to a hundred and twenty percent left it slightly flexible and ambiguous, because my thought is that, again, there are resources out there for the affordable, for that low income and very low income. There are subsidies out there. And we do have resources in our community for that. Where there are no resources available is in that middle income, that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. And, you know, even in that sixty to eighty, it's kind of a gray area. And so what I thought, you know, out of the gate, it makes sense to be, build in as much flexibility into this program as possible so that the board can be nimble and decide what, where the community need really is. And then, you know, jockey to meet that need. And so, for example, if there, if there is a grant that's available and maybe that grant hits that sixty to eighty percent, then well, why not? Why not go for it? But, but then also recognizing that, look, we're not trying to compete with the section eight developers out there and the HUD developers out there that are taking advantage of those resources and they, they have a game plan and they're already operating in our community to meet that sixty percent below. So rather than, you know, reinventing the wheel or competing with those existing providers out there, let's try to meet that need where it isn't being met. But also, at the same time, give ourselves that flexibility to be able to take advantage of an opportunity if it kind of dips down into that, you know, below moderate income. But recognize that, look, really, the greater, the broader purpose of this authority is to meet that workforce housing that, you know, let's, we'll call it sixty to a hundred and twenty percent, where there are just not other resources out there to meet that need.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Megan. Really appreciate that presentation.
Thank you, Megan.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter? All right, hearing none. We will hear more about this in the future. So that concludes our regular agenda. I will now close the Capitol Council chambers to the public. I want to thank the members of the public for coming. Our regular meeting is now concluded at seven-ten and we will convene an executive session here in a few moments. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Need to vote on that.
Thanks, candidates.
Oh, yeah, let's vote on that. We're now going to vote to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Oh, it's been moved in second. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Yeah, I knew you guys would all vote for it.
Adam Clark. The record, would you read into the record that the reason for executive session?
Yes. The motion to convene an executive session is pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four dash two zero six one F for the purpose of communicating with city legal counsel to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated.
Thank you, staff.